Mayor Jones.
Here. And just to note, we have Councilmember Klaufenstein is joining us remotely, so she is here even though she's not here here. So hi, Steph. May I ask Assistant City Manager Elise Kim to do the invocation followed by a pledge of allegiance by Councilmember Kimwin?
Thank you, Mayor. If I could ask everyone to please stand and prepare yourself according to your faith. Dear Lord, thank you for the opportunity and the freedom to gather together to serve the people of Garden Grove. We ask for your guidance, wisdom, and understanding this evening as we unite and work together, work towards the good and betterment of this community. Please bless our discussions and deliberations so that we may be peace-filled and productive. Amen. Place your right hand of your heart, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Alrighty, thank you. I would like to go out of order and pull item 4A from the consent calendar forward. This is adoption of a resolution of commendation for George Tyndall, our former Garden Grove City Manager.
Move it.
Check on it. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigan?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil? Mayor Protem Deidrewin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Member, Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimwin?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaufenstein. Councilmember Klaufenstein, can you hear me? Councilmember Klaufenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Technical difficulties.
Alright, we'll now go to presentations. Tonight's Community Spotlight is in memory of former City Manager George Tyndall. And some remarks will be read by Mike Fenderson, who is a former city, former deputy city manager as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Mike Fenderson. I worked for this city for about 25 years. And it, and I retired about 25 years ago. It's nice to be back. I have a lot of fond memories here. I just wish I was back under much different circumstances. Tonight, the Community Spotlight honors and recognizes former Garden Grove City Manager George Tyndall, whose recent passing was a shock and tremendous loss to his family and friends and colleagues. When I was deputy city manager, one of my duties was to do the Community Spotlight. And doing that for years, I never cried once. I think tonight's going to be an exception. Join us this evening is his family, George's wife, Suzie, and his daughter, Jennifer. We also have in the audience several former members of the city that worked with George. George Tyndall was born on October 11th, 1943, in Stockton, California. George served in the United States Army Reserve and obtained both his bachelor and master of science degrees in civil engineering from Cal State University Long Beach and a second master's degree in public administration from Cal State University Fullerton. After working for various Orange County cities and becoming an expert in municipal engineering and management, on June 4th, 1984, George began his career with the City of Garden Grove as the Public Works Director. After only four months, he concurrently took on the role as Assistant City Manager, and four years ago, he was appointed City Manager. Actually, I became Assistant City Manager at the same time George did. At that time, Dell Powers was the City Manager. He wrote out 10 things he was looking for in his, in an assistant. And evidently, George and I both meant all 10 things, and then we became Assistant City Managers. Part of what I'll be doing tonight is talking about some of George's accomplishments during his 16-year tenure as City Manager, including steering the committee, steering Garden Grove clear of the 1994 Orange County bankruptcy. I want to dwell on that just for a moment. Most, in 1994, before that, most all the cities in Orange County put their investment money in a pool in the county of Orange. And George and our controller at the time, Tony Andrade, they knew that those investments were risky. And so they convinced the council not to, not to join. And George was getting pressure from the city councils. He says, "Look at the returns they're getting and we're not. Why don't we join?" And, and George withstood that. And we were one of only two cities that did not join the county investments. And we therefore did not lose any money. And all but two cities weren't in that. And as politics would have the same council members, which I think is pretty funny, the same council members that were pressuring George to join the county pool were the ones that were now bragging that we weren't in it and taking the credit for saying, "Yep, thanks to us, we weren't in the pool." Moving along regarding George's accomplishments, he was very innovative about neighborhood improvement and formed a division to work with neighborhoods to upgrade them. And he formed a special team to do that, and I think I actually supervised that team for a while. This, I think, is really outstanding. He also saw the possibilities of taking advantage of the city's proximity to Disneyland and the Anaheim Convention Center. And he started talking to hotel developers, showing them that we had land for hotel development closer to Disneyland than Anaheim did. So he started talking again to hotel developers. And there was a big article in the paper, and George kept it in the manager's office, had it framed, where they were, the newspaper was talking about all the hotels being built on Harbor and Garden Grove versus the few that were being built in Anaheim. He was also instrumental in developing the Garden Grove Auto Mall along the 22 freeway and the education center near our civic center. George also served the community through volunteer efforts with the Garden Grove Elks Lodge 1952 and the Garden Grove Rotary District 5320 and the Orange County City Managers Association and the Society of American Military Engineers. On May 7th, 2004, George retired after 22 years serving the city. He continued working in his own consulting business and kept in touch with many of his Garden Grove colleagues and gladly used his expertise to help them when needed. Now, before I get into the presentation that the mayor and the council are going to do, I want to say one more thing about George, and it really doesn't come after accomplishments, but it was his management style that was so unique. We, employee morale was great. We worked hard. We had a lot of fun. We had a lot of employee activities. And some of the things we did, when I would tell my colleagues in other cities, "Really? You guys do that in Garden Grove? We've never been able to do that and do this." So it's hard to quantify his management style and how much, how valuable that was. But to me, that's where he really stood out. He was, I don't want to say he was friends, but he was working friends with all the employees. And they all knew him, and he made an effort to know everybody and just kept it one real friendly and a really feel-good organization. At this time then, I'd like to ask Suzie Tyndall to please come forward. At this time, the mayor and city council would like to present you with a resolution of commendation recognizing former Garden Grove City Manager George Tyndall. His legacy as a proven leader, community supporter, and valued friend will be forever remembered. Garden Grove offers its deepest support to you and your family to find strength and comfort in his memory. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mike. And I'll come up in one second. I just want to monologue for one second and add a few thoughts of my own on a follow-up to your comments. George was a truly remarkable human being. That, that family culture within the organization that was so deeply rooted back in that day still exists because it has such deep roots within our, our family culture here in Garden Grove. So that was very special. The redevelopment agency machine that George and Matt and Bruce and Les Jones created was truly visionary. That, to this day, still produces $25 million a year. 20% of our top-line revenues to the city come from that hotel tax that was generated from that foresight that, that they had and the vision they had back in that day. So, thank you, Mike, for coming and delivering those remarks. Thank you for being here, Suzie and some of the other family. Mallory, Les, our former city clerk, Ruth Smith, wherever she went. Oh, there you are, yeah. And others. With that, I'll, I'll come up and present something to you. Presenting with this on behalf of Garden Grove, City Garden Grove, and our city council.
Thank you so much.
George will forever be remembered for his such a deep impact.
Thank you. And I really appreciate that you're honoring him in this, this way. Right?
Thank you so much. Can we take a couple photos? Alright, thank you. We'll now go ahead on with the rest of our agenda. Les, Mike, and all, if you like, you're welcome to scoot out before we dive into all the, you know what comes next. You've been here before. And, and you know, you know how long you're going to be awkwardly stuck in those seats if you don't clear out right now. So, thank you so much for being here. Alright, we'll now move on to oral communications. They do have half a dozen cards, starting with Nicholas Dibbs. He did.
Oh, here he comes. Now he's leaving.
Okay. We'll come, we'll come back. Aaron from OCFA.
Good evening.
OCE.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and honorable city council members, my name is Aaron Pirdan, and I am a senior labor relations representative with the Orange County Employees Association. We proudly represent 18,000 members in the county of Orange, including approximately 300 employees here in the city of Garden Grove. OCEA and Garden Grove has had a longstanding and excellent relationship. Ultimately, while we have not always agreed, ultimately, this council has recognized the strong work and commitment that our members provided to the, our members provide to this community. Sorry, being in this box feels like I'm on the $64,000 question.
Yeah, sorry about that, yeah.
I am here tonight to talk about your employees in the Orange County Fire Authority. I reiterate that the men and women of OCFA are your employees. They are not simply a contracted service. Your employees and our members are the 911 dispatchers, fleet mechanics, fire inspectors, nurse educators, as well as dozens of other classifications that make sure our firefighters and paramedics can get to the scene and save lives. They also keep our community and kids safe by teaching proper safety, not only in preventing fires, but also on issues such as preventing drownings. We are in your schools, making sure the children of this community are safe. Our inspectors also protect the businesses of Garden Grove. During COVID, our members stepped up proudly to exercise their duty to safeguard our communities, including the Garden Grove, including Garden Grove as much as humanly possible from this deadly virus. While others stayed home, they kept working, including running Operation Independence to get our citizens tested and vaccinated. The service of the men and women, both professional staff and firefighters, is second to none. I personally have had to call 911 and have OCFA help my own family, and each time, I received nothing but the greatest service. In fact, although a resident of Buena Park, my mother was transported for a medical emergency from Kaiser here in Garden Grove to Garden Grove Memorial, and her life was saved because of the fast-acting actions of OCFA dispatchers and firefighters. They diagnosed her condition better than the actual doctors at Kaiser did. Without them, I am not sure where our family would be. I'm here tonight because after 14 months of delays for our OCA members, it is with pure frustration and disappointment that I have to say that the majority, and I reiterate, the majority of the JPA Board and executive leadership has let down the men and women of OCFA. I will again pause to say that we do not believe that this council feels the same way. We came to the bargaining table with a basic request that our members be treated with dignity and respect, and that they simply be given a fair wage increase. OCFA is in a strong financial position by their own budget reports. Property taxes are up over 6%. Our members are facing inflation of 8.5%, and we are losing employees. We cannot simply replace our experts with people off of the street. To be offered 1.25% over two years was beyond insulting. That's .0625% per year. Then to have our brothers and sisters in the firefighters' union be offered zero added fuel, pun intended, to the fire. We ask that each of you support your designated JPA board member to respect the men and women of this organization by authorizing your chief negotiator to come to the table with fair wage increases and no takeaways. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anna Parker.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. I might need to put more than one issue, so if you please give me a few more minutes, I'll take, I'll do my best. Since December, I'm having a trouble with a neighbor that he's, he's building too close to us. And that was approved for as a low income, but that, that's not really a low income because people are going to pay much more. But still, I came to them before they started building, and I said, "Hey, this is too close to us. It's going to end our safety, our privacy. There's no way to put a wall here." And they just ignored us and kept building. Because we are, supposedly it should be a curve, but it's a straight street. But we have, we have had this diagonal property line. But we are using it on a straight line because the old neighbors said, "Oh, the city did it by mistake. You don't, we don't need to." So we are using it as a straight line. The new neighbors just ignored that, and they are building a crooked house. So I offered them, before they started building, "Hey, let us buy this area that we are using exclusively for 67 years." So it does not, because the house is just on top of us. It just ruins the neighborhood similarity that should be on the code. They ignored us and they keep building. This is how the houses have the space between each other. So they have around 12 feet between each other. On the, on our case, we are only at a corner 3.7 feet from the property line. There is a planter there for 67 years, so we have only one foot to get to the back of our house. So we asked them, "Can we buy this?" They refused to, and they keep building. So we came to the city, and since December, before they started building it, I came to the city and they say, "Oh, your house is too big. You have to cut part of your house." At the city, they said. So I offer, "Okay, I'll pay for you to just put it down." We fix it. "I'll pay for it. I don't care. I'll get a loan and I'll pay for it." So I have my house just like every other house on the street. I don't care. They just keep building. So they're almost ready there. But, okay, so we are going to move out of our house and build other two ADUs like they did. But we don't have room for because we have only one foot to get to the back. And then they, one city gentleman came with the option, "Just us to build a wall." Okay, I, I suggested him, "How can you build a wall? There is no space to build a wall." So this front, this front extension needs to be put down because there is no space for a wall. They have windows facing right at us. We totally lost any privacy, any safety. We don't feel safe because they are going to be walking on where we have only one foot. There are two rentals there, two front doors. I see two front doors from my bed. So I ask you, there was some architecture problem. I went to architecture school. I was raised on real estate. I went to law school. I was studying. I cannot sleep at night. They are there from 7:00 to 7:00. I see their faces. They open their doors and I see them from my bed because they refuse even to put the wall up. So we need to work on, on, at least, I hear everything that goes inside their ADU because they're too close to us. They're just right by our bed. So I have the, I'll, I'll pay for it. I'll pay to put those two ADUs down. I'll pay to work on it. My husband worked on TV that he gets a bunch of people together. He works at Disney. The church, the neighbors, they are willing to help us. I'll pay for it just to build the right thing. So I have my, my, I have, I, I am asking for my right for privacy, for safety, that I lost it. And-
Thank you. Please wrap it up.
Thank you. I'm sorry for bothering you. Or at least to replace the door, the doors and windows so that does not become a man interest because that does not support that the way it is. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Danny Moore.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmen, councilmembers. My name's Danny Moore. I am a resident of District 1 here in Garden Grove. I also used to be employed by the city of Garden Grove for several years as a member of the Fire Department, and I'm now working for OCFA. I'm a fire captain for OCFA. I'm here today to, to talk to you about what's going on that you've heard a little bit about so far. Last time I was in these chambers was a little over three years ago, when this council voted for us to go to OCFA. That vote was passed by this council for a couple of reasons, for the long-term financial security of the city. It also was beneficial to the employees at the time. We had additional opportunity at OCFA that we were all excited about. Currently, we're in a labor dispute. One thing we didn't think we were going to lose when we went to OCFA was the city family that we had here. We've lost it. The management at OCFA does not care about the employees. They're not concerned about us at all. The JPA member, the majority of the JPA, isn't concerned about our labor contract, with the exception, one of the bright exceptions is Councilman O'Neil. He's been an ardent friend to the union. It's the labor. He cares about the employees there, which are your, your employees. I'm here to speak to you, to encourage you to reach out to the JPA members that Councilman O'Neil is, is, works with, to your neighboring cities, to those councils, to encourage their JPA members to come back to the negotiating table to speak to us. Currently, the priority of the department isn't that of the employees. It seems to be all kinds of myriad of other projects. We are, we're looking to spend $80 million on helicopters instead of taking care of our employees. Those helicopters won't even land at the majority of the city, the hospitals here in the county, won't benefit the citizens of Garden Grove at all. They're just a pet project. That's an extreme waste of money. My encouraging, I encourage you, and I encourage every member that you, every person you can speak to, to look to put those funds back into the community by paying a fair and equitable wage to the employees, to the citizens here of the county, of the city, myself, a couple other of OCFA's members that live in the city, but we all live in the county. Put it back into the communities by paying the members a fair and equitable wage. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Todd Baldridge.
Mr. Mayor, honorable councilmembers, my name's Todd Baldridge. I'm the president of the Orange County Professional Firefighters Association, where I represent over 1,100 firefighters and paramedics and those that serve the citizens of Garden Grove proudly. First, I'd like to thank the council, especially Representative O'Neil, our JPA representative, for the support and respect of our members over the years. We are here tonight because we made a commitment to our members to go to all of our local city council meetings and shed light on the current negotiation process. As you can see from the number of our members this evening, they are frustrated in the way the Orange County Fire Authority has been bargaining throughout the negotiation process. The department is still offering a 0% raise. With inflation as it is, up to 9%, that can't be tolerated. One of the biggest areas of concern in the fire service as a whole is struggling recruitment and retention. Our last Orange County Fire Authority graduation, that we just graduated, 306 applicants applied. That's it, 306. We wanted 50 people to graduate. We only graduated 19. We didn't even get half of what the department needed because of recruitment issues. Even Saturday, last week, Tuesday of last week, one of those coveted 19 left this organization to go back to their previous department in the inland empire because the pay and benefit package is that much better. They could not afford to drive into this county and work for our fire organization. So we, we netted 18 people when we needed 50. That's concerning. With staffing shortages, COVID, historic wildfires, all contributing to the never-before-seen mental health issues with our rank-and-file members, the usage of our counseling team has gone up an astonishing 180%. I'm concerned for the future of the Fire Department. Difficulty, or difficult working conditions, more dangerous fires, cancer being the number-one cause of death. We're not dying in the fires we once died in. We're bringing that death home by cancer. Number two cause of death is suicide. We're breaking our members mentally because of what is happening. That can't be tolerated. The next generation of individuals do not want to do this job. If they're not going to do it, who is? Tonight, I ask the city council to empower your JPA member, to tell the OCFA, other JPA board members, to participate in good-faith bargaining and get us a fair and equitable contract that all of our members deserve. Thank you for your time.
Steve Creha.
Mayor Jones and Garden Grove City Council. My name is Steve Creha, and I'm a fire captain assigned to Station 84 here in the city of Garden Grove. I'm also the vice president and negotiations lead for Orange County Professional Firefighters. Back in July, our negotiations team was hopeful while waiting for OCFA's board of directors' counteroffer. Unfortunately, after we sent several proposals in good faith for them to consider, they felt your firefighters here tonight deserve a 0% increase to their pay. Our negotiation team has spent over 12 months developing creative ways to enhance the next contract, which would not only help OCFA, but also the employees. As you can see in here tonight, your firefighters are frustrated with their current working conditions and wages. Over the past 10 years, we've been required to pay, on average, an additional 18% of our pay to OSER's retirement system. During those same 10 years, we received an hourly wage increase of 13%, resulting in a net 5% pay cut. Our last two-year contract included an adjustment to EMT pay, but still 0% in hourly wages. As you're aware, the cost of living has drastically increased. Rising inflation has driven up housing costs, and everything from gas to groceries has shown in the Consumer Price Index statistics. This has effectively caused an additional 9.1% cut in what we are, what we are taking home just this year alone. To survive financially, we've been forced, literally, to work more hours, with most of us working 100 hours or more each week. with most of us working one hundred hours or more each week. This imposed solution that we've taken on while patiently waiting for a cost of living adjustment has taken its toll in the form of increased workers' comp claims and serious mental health complications. It's become such an issue that we're now seeing for the first time our own firefighters leaving for other agencies or just abandoning the fire service completely. As we've told the OCFA's negotiation team, we are not interested in playing another game of we go high and they go low. That's why our proposals have continued to be consistent with earnings of other firefighter agencies and what we need just to get by as shown in the document I provided tonight. This document breaks down an OCFA firefighter's paycheck, what they bring home, and how they are left in a financial deficit at the end of each year. We know there are many costs to running a fire department, but this is a service-based industry that is only successful with a skilled workforce that feels respected and appreciated. Nothing should be more important than taking care of the people working on the front lines every day while keeping your community safe. Thank you.
Sam Semmingson.
Good evening, Councilmembers. My name is Sam Semmingson, and I proudly serve the City of Garden Grove as a fire apparatus engineer at Station Eighty-four off of Valley View near Lamson. This year marks my fifteenth year with the Orange County Fire Authority. When I transitioned careers from the private sector, OCFA was making a name for itself as one of the premier fire departments in the country, becoming a true destination department. Unfortunately, this viewpoint is quickly changing. Fifteen years ago, approximately five thousand people would apply for OCFA recruitments, and only the top one percent would get a job offer. Now, our department is unable to even fill the available spots in our current recruit academies. The firefighter world is a small one, and word spreads quickly. Our brothers and sisters know it has been far too long since OCFA has awarded our hard-working members that serve your citizens with a fair and equitable contract. Our members are exhausted from the preventable staffing crisis OCFA has created, and many are concerned about the direction our department is headed. While working on our union's executive board, as well as our negotiation team, I first, I have seen firsthand how OCFA management and most of the JPA board take little to no interest in supporting your firefighters. This department does not care about those of us who are out here, day in and day out, serving the citizens of Garden Grove. We stepped up during an unprecedented pandemic, dawning head-to-toe infectious disease suits, exposing our loved ones to an unknown deadly virus, constantly being ostracized by friends and neighbors who feared being infected by us. And we set up and staffed county vaccination sites, all while continuing to work through staffing shortages and fighting some of the county's largest wildland fires in history. As firefighters, we continue to answer the call. In May, despite being overworked, myself, one of the gentlemen out here, and approximately twenty other firefighters stepped up traveling to the state of New Mexico for the Calf Canyon Fire. Lives and property were at stake from massive campaign fires running through New Mexico that had already resulted in catastrophic losses. I was forced to leave my full-time working wife and three young children for nearly three weeks. I highlight this because these are the things that myself and more than eleven hundred Orange County professional firefighters continue to do day in and day out, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. We ask that you continue to support our efforts and encourage your representative, Mr. O'Neill, to express Garden Grove's interest in providing the firefighters that serve your community with a fair and equitable contract. Thank you for your time and support. Respectfully, Sam Semmingson. Thank you.
Tom Raiber.
Hi, I'm Tom Raiber. Nine dot eighteen dot one fifty dot zero one zero. Commercial enclosed trash area. Every five thousand square feet of a building, one commercial bend. I personally emailed May twenty-sixth of two thousand and twenty-two to the certain people listed later on. I came to the council meeting on June fourteenth of two thousand and twenty-two and talked about the email. I sent a second email on June fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-two. I came to the council meeting on June twenty-eighth to talk about the other two emails. Today is seventy-six days since the first email. Still silence and crickets. So the only way I can beat you guys is to put it on public. Steve Jones, Scott Stiles, Teresa Palmeri, Maria Stipe, Bill Murray, he's a good guy, but I gotta say his name, Lisa Kim, David Dent, and Anon Roa. He's a good guy, too. I'm handing it over to the city clerk. Their names are on the emails. I called We the People City Hall today to talk to code enforcement. Appointments only, and only digital, is in an email, digital, and yet no response. Right here, Supreme Court Number Twelve dash three nine eight. It was put to the Supreme Court on October two thousand and twelve, argued April fifteenth of two thousand and thirteen, decided on December thirteenth of two thousand and thirteen. It's about God's creation, DNA. This is a case law that if somebody changes your DNA, I see DNA that that company now owns you because your DNA has been changed. You can laugh about it, but there's a court case about it. So, again, I'm here in a public place. I have the PDF. I'm handing it over to the city clerk. She wants this PDF. She has my email. I'll send it over. It needs to be put in the minutes. Because what's happening is that little pinch in the arm, one, two, three times, four or five, their DNAs are being changed. Also, I suggest you call up your insurance company about your life insurance because in the very bottom clause says, "No non-approved shot." Second of all, Brown Act. Stephanie's not here. I looked at the headline. It doesn't show what address she's at because by law in the Browns Act, to do the teleconference scene, you have to list the address that their person's at, and us publics have to be there or can be there. You guys did it for a whole year, this teleconference scene, then you guys did it for four months. This year, in January, you guys weren't here. You guys changed the agenda. I started my thing off saying, "There's two agendas." This, this, this council meeting started even start. And Stephanie is listed as being here, and it's illegal. Thanks a lot. Timeout.
Nicholas Dibs.
Mayor Jones, members of the council, my name is Nicholas Dibs. I'm a longtime resident here in Garden Grove. I'm also a teacher and an educator. I do want, I've said this before, if you want to increase public participation and civic engagement, allow people to call in with their public comments if they can't come here in person. You have a council member who's not here today, but whether all the council members are here or not, you should be allowing what you did during the pandemic, which is to allow people who cannot come in person to give their public comments. Okay, now I want to echo what our friend Todd Baldridge said. I'm a teacher and an educator. I've come before this council with the same kind of problem, but we're gonna connect the dots a little bit here between the firefighters and the teachers. And that is that the second leading cause of death among young people is suicide. So that's a common, the other commonality is that we need more career and technical education classes and programs. And so the cuts that have been made to the firefighters of not putting people first, but putting expensive equipment and other things that are not a priority first, is the same thing going on with the students. All ten intermediate schools have lost their wood shops and metal shops. The high schools have lost their auto shops. We need to bring those back. We have a shortage of skilled workers in this country, whether it's firefighters, contractors, electricians, plumbers, whoever. There's a shortage of skilled workers. Where does it start? In the schools. We need to have more career and technical education classes. So I join with the, my fellow brothers and firefighters as a teacher and say they, they need a fair contract, and also we need to improve our public education at, in the, in the public schools so that we have more career and technical education, more shop classes, and join together and change this country for the better. Because if you don't have good skilled workers, it's gonna affect the community. It brings the economy up when you have more skilled workers. So, and the mental health issues that were mentioned, suicide being the leading cause of death among firefighters, it's same thing in the, in the schools. So we all need to work together for a better community. And I'm suggesting that we, we make some positive changes. And so back these changes of, not only at the school board, but where we need them, and that is to bring more career and technical education classes so that our young people can also have mentoring programs with the firefighters. Okay, now crime. Got a short time here left. We, George, I'll give you the card, but I, yesterday I was asked by a business owner in West Garden Grove saying his business has been broken into three times, and the last time was on Saturday, August the sixth. It took the fire, it took the police department about thirty minutes to respond at about fourth, four o'clock in the morning. So I, I wanna ask Chief DeRay and his staff to look into this. So there's complaints over there in that part at Chapman and Valley View that the crime, that the police are not, his request is bring a substation back to West Garden Grove if we don't have one, or enlarge it. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak who did not submit a pin card? Okay, seeing none, we will close oral communications. Gentlemen, thank you for being here. We appreciate you and everything that you guys do. So we're pulling for you. You're welcome to cruise out because we're gonna head into all the business items now. That'll conclude oral communications. Thank you. A second hand one. I'll check it in a minute. All right.
That's why she holds hostage.
All right, written communications three A. This is consideration of use of Willowitt Golf Course for the annual Garden Grove Community Foundation and Chamber of Commerce Golf Classic on September twenty-eighth.
Mr. John Montage, Montange is here to provide that report.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Staff received a written request from the president of the Garden Grove Community Foundation, Tam Nguyen, and the chair of the board of the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, John Glant, requesting the city's council's approval for a one-day use of the Willowitt Golf Course for the annual fundraising golf tournament on Wednesday, September the twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. For the past sixteen years, the Garden Grove Community Foundation, known as the Foundation, and the Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce, known as the Chamber, have partnered to host the Foundation Chamber Golf Classic. This event is the largest and most significant fundraiser for both organizations. Funds raised to help support Foundation annual events and support local organizations, including the Free Summer Concert Series, Winter in the Grove, the Community Services Annual Holiday Toy Drive, and various community groups, as well as assisting the Chamber in promoting the Garden Grove business community and providing resources for tourists who visit Garden Grove. The nonprofit rate for an all-day tournament with a hundred and forty-four players is four thousand three hundred and twenty dollars. The Foundation and Chamber are requesting this fee to be waived. Staff recommends that the city council consider the Foundation and Chamber request for the one-day use and fee waiver of Willowitt Golf Course. That concludes staff reports. I'm available for any questions if you have. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Any questions or-
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deidrewin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Councilmember Klaffenstein, who is joining us from one five nine four seven South Shore Drive, Truckee, California, as listed on the agenda. Okay, then. Um, we will now recess and go on to successor agency. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Member Brightigam?
Here.
Member O'Neill?
Here.
Member Deidrewin? Member Kim Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Bowie? Chair Jones?
Here.
And Member Klaffenstein?
Here.
All right, we already did oral communications. We'll move on to consent items just received and filed in the minutes.
Second.
I'm sorry, who, who moved? Okay, thank you.
John.
Not allowed to know.
John, second.
Roll call vote, please.
Member Brightigam?
Yes.
Member O'Neill?
Yes.
Member Deidrewin?
Yes.
Member Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bowie? Chair Jones?
Yes.
And Member Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Any matters from agency members? Seeing none, we will adjourn back to city council. That takes us on to consent items. It's recommended that items four A through four M be acted on simultaneously unless anyone would like to pull an item. Any requests to pull?
I move the balance since we did pull out four A.
Uh-huh.
Second.
A.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie? Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deidrewin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
All right, commission committee matters. Item five A, this is an acceptance of Commissioner Yasmin Vasquez's resignation from the Traffic Commission. I don't know if we need any-
I'll move to-
Things said, but we just need to accept it. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neill?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Deidrewin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received. Seven yes votes.
Okay, items for consideration, six A.
Item six A is award of contract to Adura Group Inc. for professional engineering services for the repair and rehabilitation of water storage reservoirs, Phase Two. And Mr. Bill Murray is here to provide that report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. Tonight, city council is being asked to award a contract to Adura Group Incorporated for professional engineering services required for the repair and rehabilitation of four partially buried reservoirs located at our Trask and Lamson facilities. These projects were identified in a two thousand and thirteen condition evaluation and assessment report, which included structural, seismic, corrosion, mechanical, and security assessments. While the two thousand and thirteen report identified the needed repairs and issues with the facilities, specific construction documents are needed, and that's why I'm here tonight. Staff sent out four proposals- Staff sent out four proposals and received four responses. Staff reviewed and rated the proposals and determined that Adura Group is the most qualified firm and provide the most qualified service to the city. The negotiated professional service agreement is for just under $400,000. Should Council decide to award the contract this evening, staff can begin utilizing these services by late August of this year. This concludes staff's report, and I'm available should you have any questions.
Thanks, Bill. Any questions, comments, or a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dieterwin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Or did I... Councilmember Klaffenstein?
She said yes.
Yes. Motion received, seven yes votes.
Yes.
All right. Ordinances presented for a second reading and adoption, 7A.
Item 7A is the second reading of ordinance number 2937 entitled "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Garden Grove Reauthorizing the Public Educational and Governmental Fees on State Video Franchisees Operating Within the City of Garden Grove."
Move to approve.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dieterwin?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, that takes us on to matters. We do have four listed, so 8A is an update on the progress of a future navigation center as requested by City Manager Scott Stiles.
Go ahead and turn this over to City Manager Scott.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, just a couple of quick updates on this report before I ask Assistant City Manager Lisa Kim and our Assistant Police Chief, Amir Alfara, to talk a little more about the report. I would say on this issue, probably none of us hear any issue more frequently than the issues of homelessness. So we know how important this is. We've been talking about this issue for a while now. We've been trying to brief people about the fact that we're working on trying to establish a navigation center in our community. I will say, Councilman Bowie and I were having a conversation earlier this afternoon, and we were talking about the great number of initiatives that we've already put forward and what this council has already approved to deal with this epidemic of homelessness that we have. If I could just kind of, for the members of the public, I know all of you know this, obviously, we have a very robust housing authority that issues 2,100 Section 8 vouchers every year. They're one of only four housing authorities in Orange County. We have, we all know about the great work that our special resources team is doing, and we know that they're out there. They know folks on a first-name basis who are struggling on the street, providing great services to them. The council has very generously funded our Be Well OC Mobile Mental Health Program at no small cost to this community, and it's providing great benefits to our police department and to the community as a whole. We're seeing record ADU permits being issued, probably more than any other city in Orange County, and that's just an indicator about the need for housing for people. And that great number of ADU permits is causing, you know, is a tremendous amount of workload for Lisa Kim and her department. We've done our first permanent supportive housing project, and we've joined the Orange County Housing Trust. And finally, the City Council very generously provides a lot of money through our emergency shelter grants to organizations throughout the community. The one area that we've kind of got a little missing hole is the creation of this navigation center, and so, you know, I've worked really hard bringing together the cities of Westminster and Fountain Valley into the fold to discuss about trying to collaboratively work together on this solution. We've made a lot of good progress. I know you've gotten some reports from us before, and so I think we have some more good news to share with you this evening. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Kim and our Assistant Chief.
Thank you, Mr. Stiles. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The item before you is our regular update report in addition to the highlights that City Manager Stiles shared relating to our efforts in our search for a potential site for a future navigation center in the city. To date, staff is pleased to report an off-market property located at 13871 West Street and within the city's homeless shelter overlay zone has been identified. The property sits on .14 acres or approximately 18,000 square foot lot. It is developed with two adjoining industrial structure totaling a little over 11,000 square feet. The primary building is about 9,600 square feet and recently rehabilitated. An adjacent smaller building is about 1,700 square feet, and the configuration of those buildings are attached in your staff report under Attachment 1. By way of background, a navigation center provides for emergency housing and wraparound services to individuals experiencing homelessness. It is anticipated that the future navigation center would support up to 80 individuals experiencing homelessness within the cities of Garden Grove, Fountain Valley, and Westminster. The navigation center will be referral, will be a referral-only-based facility with managed and controlled transportation access in and out of the facility. In areas of community engagement, direct outreach to businesses located along West Street will begin this week in coordination with our special resources team. In addition, two community meetings are scheduled. The first is scheduled on Wednesday, August 17th, from 5:30 to 7:30, and we're coordinating with the property owner to provide for the facility onsite so the adjacent businesses have, we can provide information to the immediate businesses nearby. The second community meeting scheduled on Tuesday, August 30th, from 5:30 to 7:30 will be coordinated and held at the Community Meeting Center at the CMC. The community meeting information will be available on the city's homelessness website, and in addition, we are coordinating with the Office of Community Relations to assist with posting of this information on our social media platforms. At this time, Assistant Chief Alfara will share a few remarks relating to the future navigation center and advancing the potential homeless resource for the Garden Grove Police Department.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Jones and council members. I will tell you from a PD perspective, we're enthusiastic about the navigation center. We believe it's going to be another resource for our PD, specifically our special resource team and our Be Well team, to utilize to find long-term solutions for our homeless community. So we think that's going to have a tremendous positive impact throughout the city, improve the quality of life for everyone, our business communities, residential communities, as well as our homeless community. So we are looking forward to implementing this center and full speed ahead on it. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Assistant Chief Alfara. This concludes staff's presentation this evening. The request is City Council direction and concurrence to proceed with acquisition, to proceed with negotiation for a purchase and sale agreement for the acquisition of 13871 West Street. Staff's available for questions.
Move to approve enthusiastically from the district representative for that area.
I second to that.
Okay, roll call vote.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dieterwin?
Yes.
Councilmember Kim Nguyen?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowie?
Yes.
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightigam?
Yes.
And Councilmember Klaffenstein?
Yes.
Motion received, seven yes votes.
All righty, item 8B, which is focus zoning amendments update.
Item 8B is a focus zoning amendments update on proposed tax amendments relating to the creation of objective development standards for single-family residential, multifamily residential, mixed-use, supportive housing, single-room occupancy, SRO, housing, and motel hotel conversions as requested by City Manager Stiles. And Mr. Chris Chung is here to provide the report.
Good evening, Mayor Jones and members of the City Council. Recent state housing laws have targeted ways to ease local government constraints on housing development, and affordable housing in particular. The Housing Accountability Act requires cities to use objective development standards in their reviews of residential development projects. The Housing Crisis Act, also known as Senate Bill 330, established laws that are intended to streamline housing development approvals, protect existing affordable housing. This allows cities from rezoning a property to a lower-density residential and restricts cities from establishing new residential design standards unless they meet the definition of objective design standards as provided by state law. To help cities and counties prepare, adopt, and implement plans and process improvements to facilitate housing approvals in accordance with state laws, the state established the SB 2 and LEAP Planning Grant Programs, which provide funding and technical assistance to all local governments in California. The city has leveraged these funds in part to support the completion and adoption of focused zoning code amendments to comply with state law. On April 21st and May 10th of this year, city staff, along with its consultant, MIG, conducted initial focused zoning amendment study sessions that were open to the public with both the Planning Commission and City Council, where a general overview was provided on the proposed code updates and changes. In coordination with its consultant, MIG, the city has prepared the proposed draft focused zoning amendments relating to development standards for single-family residential, multifamily residential, mixed-use, supportive housing, and single-room occupancy housing. The proposed amendments will ensure Garden Grove is in compliance with all applicable state housing laws. Prior to tonight's study session, clean and redlined versions of the proposed code amendments were provided to the Planning Commission and City Council and also made available to the public on the city's webpage. A similar study session was also held with the Planning Commission at last Thursday's Planning Commission meeting. With that said, we will now move forward to the presentation portion, and MIG staff will present an overview of the proposed focused zoning code amendments. And following the presentation, staff, along with its consultants, will be happy to take any questions and comments you may have. I'd like to now hand the presentation over to Laura Stetson from MIG, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Chris. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, I'll try to keep this short this evening because we did meet last May. We provided a very broad overview, and I know you've had a few days to look through all these materials, and we'll be back before you at the end of September for a formal public hearing. So let me buzz through this, and we'll have, as Chris said, we'll have questions afterwards. I apologize if I'm looking off to the side and not at you as we're going through the presentation. Chris mentioned that the purpose of the zoning code amendments is to address largely state law, but also to do some cleanup to the code of things that have been maybe bothering staff for a while or just haven't quite worked out yet. So once you crack open the book, it's an opportunity to fix those things that really needed fixing. But overall, the proposed revisions are to address changes to state housing law. The topics are varied. As part of this presentation, we will group them together to help get through it, from single-family to multifamily to the objective design standards and also your mixed-use regulations. You might recall that you completely updated or provided new mixed-use regulations about eight or nine years ago, so we didn't have to touch those very much. We just had to brush them off a little bit and make sure that they were objective, and so the mixed-use regulations did not get as much treatment as these other provisions. Since May, when we came to you with some recommendations the Planning Commission had made and to give you an overview, we have made changes to the materials that are in front of you to address things that the Planning Commission and you had asked for, including such things as four-sided architecture of a building, so you just don't have one side that looks really nice and the rest that look like a square box. There was a request that we include provisions to prevent graffiti on walls, and so that has been included as well, not just for residential, but for all zones where you might find walls. There was a request from the Planning Commission that the city get rid of the limit on the number of bathrooms in a single-unit home, a single-family home, and so that has been done as well. So let's start out with what I'm going to call Mr. Egert's chapter. The Assistant City Attorney, he has very cleverly put together one chapter, new chapter in the code, that addresses many complicated things that the state law has put into effect, from density bonuses to how many hearings you can have on a housing project, what are the procedures that you need to go through. And so these are all in your new chapter 9.60. So if you're a real housing law geek, that's where I'd first direct you to go look. There are provisions to address some of the things that you just heard a staff report about, a low-barrier navigation center, considered possibly what's called supportive or transitional housing. And so in chapter 9.6, there are regulations that address those types of uses and ensure that they comply with law, but more than anything, make sure that there are opportunities for these needed types of uses to be provided in the community. There are also provisions, not just for supportive housing for homeless individuals or the unhoused, but also the city, through this zoning code update, is proposing a new type of housing in Garden Grove. It's single-room occupancy, or SROs. And so those would be small rooms, small-unit apartment buildings that have a much smaller living space than a typical apartment building and are really providing bridge housing, if you will, for people who are moving from homelessness or supportive housing to maybe another type of housing. So it's another way to house people who may be at a transition point in their life. And that type of use, as well as others similar to it, do require that there be a management plan and staffing so that somebody is on-site to ensure that the conditions are operating well at all times. With regard to your single-family regulations, there, for a number of years, staff has had some uncodified policy to prevent single-family homes from being converted essentially to boarding houses and trying to avoid the impacts that they have on neighborhoods in terms of largely too much parking, but maybe just too many people in a house. And so many of those provisions have been pulled into the code so that rather than just gently nudge property owners to do it or have a policy, it's something that will be in the code to prevent people from essentially carving up a house and creating a boarding house out of it. This was one provision in the code, as I said, that did put a limit on bathrooms as one way of limiting that, but that did seem to be something that the Planning Commission was in favor of getting rid of, in favor of other types of provisions that would prevent the boarding house condition. And so that is in the code as well. Currently, in Garden Grove, if you have a property that is zoned for multifamily housing, for apartments, condos, and the like, you can still put one house on a lot. And the code had about four or five pages of provisions just for that, and we talked to staff, we thought, you know, why don't you just include the same provisions if it were in a single-family zone, R1? And so we took out, you'll see, one page that just has a bunch of stuff taken out in red lines, and it simply says, "Go see what the R1 zone says." So simplified it for everybody involved. In multifamily zones, there's also the opportunity to build small-lot subdivisions, so single-family homes on lots that might be 2, 3, 4,000 square feet in size, provided that the development comport with the density requirements of that zone. Those are provisions that have been in the code for some time, but because state law says that you have to have black and white regulations and not gray regulations that are subject to either negotiation or interpretation, staff has gone ahead and cleaned up the small-lot, single-family to make it much cleaner and clearer as to what you can and can't do in that regard. I know this is probably tough to read, even on your screen and for those at home, but this is, I think, a key change in your zoning code. Today, if somebody owns an R3 property for multifamily zoning, and you look at the general plan and it says, "Oh, you can build 32 units per acre there," you can't under your current regulations because it depends on the lot size. This table shows that it's a sliding scale, so even though somebody might buy a property thinking they can build 32 units per acre, they can't. And so that's something that runs afoul of state law, and so again, we've simplified it. R3 zone, 32 units per acre, comply with your setbacks and your heights and parking and landscaping and all that, and you get a great project. There is an issue that staff pointed out that developers have said is constraining them from building projects sometimes, and that's a requirement that outside of all of the closets and everything you put in an apartment or condominium, that there has to be 200 or 300 cubic feet of storage area. So that might be in your garage, above where you pull in, or it might be a common area where everybody has storage. And that has been a little bit constraining when you're trying to balance it with the densities that are in your R3 and your mixed-use zones. And so we played around with some numbers and thought, okay, how much space And so we played around with some numbers and thought, okay, how much space do we really need to store our Christmas and Halloween decorations? You know, probably 150 cubic feet's about enough, and so there's a proposed revision that that drop down to 150 cubic feet for multifamily housing and any mixed-use development, without any requirement on where it has to be, just that it's not the closets that are in your house. This is above and beyond the closets. We spent a little bit of time, in fact, more time than on other topics back in May for the objective design standard. Yes? Quick question, no, just hand signals, okay. For objective design standards, these are standards that regulate not height and setbacks and parking, but actual physical design, architecture, roofs, doors, windows, those things on buildings. And there isn't too much in your code today that does that. Some cities have design guidelines that apply in addition to development standards, but there are some things that I mentioned are gray, and staff might debate with an applicant what it really means. And so we went and looked at those things that were gray areas and tightened those up and made it very clear, and they aren't absolute. They don't say in many cases that you have to do this. It's, here's a list of five things you can do, choose three of them. So it gives flexibility and certainty if you can marry those two together. We think the code does that. And so the reason to do this is, number one, to comply with law, but just to make sure that the design standards or the design quality that you're looking for for multifamily housing is achieved in Garden Grove. And this applies essentially to anything that is not a single-family home, so pretty much all multifamily development. And this is an example on your screen of what the code says today. What's a high-quality, what's a durable material? Well, it's something that's made of pavers, or stone, or cobblestone, or something that is, and so it's better described. And it's not telling somebody what they have to do, it's saying, "Do one of these things, please." So not just walkways, but such things as how and what equipment has to be screened, how you make sure that new development ensures privacy of the folks who are moving in, but also the people who might live next door, so you're not looking into their bathrooms or bedrooms or other areas. And so there are different ways of privacy achievement, and so that's what the code lays out as well. And as I mentioned, there are provisions now also to, you have to provide landscaping or some material that deters graffiti on block walls. The real design stuff is on the screen in front of you. There are requirements that your roof pitch has to change at least twice because that creates interest up at the top level of a building. Entryways need to be recessed at least three feet. Not only does it add depth and texture to a building, but in the rare event that it rains in Garden Grove, you can step there and stay dry for a bit before you go in or out of your house. And then lastly, we made adjustments to the open space and the landscaping standards. The open space adjustments were made recognizing that as the city is looking or does allow some more urban-scale development, that it gets a lot tougher to put in open space. But it's important to have onsite open space because of, you don't want to be straining your parks. And so the open space standards now allow rooftop gardens and rooftop amenity areas to count towards open space, as well as indoor recreation areas, gyms, other things, even little tiny tucked-away barbecue areas. So more flexibility. And the open space standard is not changed, so it's still 300 square feet of a combination of private and common, but there's a lot more flexibility in how you do that. Right now, there's a requirement that you have to have at least 90 square feet of private open space balcony or patio. That's been dropped to 60, but guess what? That now goes into the common open space. So it's like a balloon with air, you squeeze it and it goes one way or the other, but it's still the same air that's in there. This chart shows that there are now requirements in the R3 zones and the mixed-use zones for certain types of amenities, so not just providing a little green space or a little patio, but you have to put something in there that the residents can benefit from, from a pool, or barbecue areas, or a children's play space, or a gym, or for seniors, there's a little bit more flexibility for seniors because they probably won't use the children's play space unless it's a bunch of fun grandparents. Landscaping standards, the city had been very forward-thinking a number of years ago in allowing for turf, artificial turf, in recognition of drought conditions, and it's better to have some funny, maybe, artificial green lawn instead of brown lawn. And so the city, through this code update, is moving that forward, but also allowing property owners and developers to provide not necessarily green plant materials, but a combination of mulch and other, this is going to be kind of a weird thing to say, but soft hardscape. So it doesn't have to be things that you water, but there's texture and color and differentiation in your front yards. And this just applies to front yards because if you can't see it, I don't think the city's too concerned about what people are doing in their backyards or fenced side yards. And there's an expanded requirement for low-ground cover in lieu of turf and things that are climate-appropriate and drought-tolerant. So those are very forward-thinking and responsive standards. With that, I will turn the presentation back over to planning staff, and we're available to answer your questions. Actually, I want to just real quickly show you what the hearing schedule is. We plan to go to the Planning Commission the first part of next month, and presuming that they get through one hearing, and we will forward their recommendations to you and see you in about six weeks from now. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Colleagues, any questions, comments? Okay, and that was just a, there's no action on that, right? That's whatever, it's just a presentation for tonight. Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to 8C.
Item 8C is discussion regarding establishing a Garden Grove film incentive program in partnership with Garden Grove Chamber of Commerce and Garden Grove Tourism Improvement District, as requested by Councilmember Kim Nguyen.
Do you want to tackle this, or do you want me to?
Well, I can chime in. So Councilmember Nguyen and I were, maybe we were a little confused. We put it back on the agenda, and she was thinking it didn't need to come back on the agenda. But what I will say about this particular item, I know all of you had a conversation about it at the last meeting. We've already started doing a little bit of work on this, on this item. I've had Sean Park on my staff, starting to do a little research about what some other cities are doing. I'll tell you one city in particular, the city of Orange. They've obviously got a pretty robust film school there with Chapman University. They've got the Circle of Orange. They issue a lot of permits for film projects and filming on streets and stuff like that. They actually have a pretty interesting program that we're looking at, and I think the direction we got is to bring back to you at some point a little report that would talk about some things that I think we can do. So it's on our radar, we're going to be putting it back on the agenda. Give us maybe a meeting or two, and then we'll be here and we'll talk more about it.
So no action needed?
Okay, thanks.
I just, you know, honestly, I think this is a really great idea to try to incentivize filming in the city. You know, it promotes the city in a positive light most times. But some of the ideas, I was thinking, you know, when I saw this on there, you know, I know there's rules regarding how far the employees can travel, and I think one of the innovative ways to kind of overcome is to create a, I don't know what they call it, a facade business type of thing where film companies can lease the space, claim it as their, and then their employees technically are working in, you know, based out of Garden Grove, even though they just have a space there, but it lets them comply with some loopholes or whatever. But stuff like that, I was thinking that might be something to explore. But yeah, I think, you know, this keeps a lot of positive focus on the city, filming, videos, all that kind of stuff. So yeah, I'm hoping that we can come up with some good, outside-the-box ideas to incentivize that here in our city.
I think it's a really good idea too, Kim, and I'd like to support it, but I think as we move forward, Scott, I think we need to kind of recognize two different kinds of movie industry. The mainstream movie, like Hollywood and things like that, and they have a whole kind of different rules and requirements that the film producer or director have to comply to. And that is an area that I don't have much expertise on. And this is another group of home and independent, you know, movie developer, producer, and directors, which they need help. So I think as we look forward to this cap endeavors, I think, let's consider both groups' needs and see what, as a city, can do in order to attract them and make it easy for them to help. And perhaps we might even start out small with a smaller, you know, movie developer, I mean, the producer and directors. And then as we attract that, maybe we can attract, you know, more mainstream, you know, movie producer from Hollywood or, you know, whoever, but not from Burbank, though. All righty? So we don't need to take action then? Just wait for more in-depth report?
Please take it away, your item.
Thank you. I also just wanted to say, first, thank you to my colleagues and to city staff for indulging this idea. I know that I mentioned at the previous meeting that this came out of a few pilot producers and directors reaching out to me specifically about a TV show that they're trying to do based in Orange County's Little Saigon area. Predominantly, a lot of the filming for that pilot is going to occur in the city of Westminster, but obviously, we know that Garden Grove is home to a significant portion of Little Saigon, so we want to make sure that they're spending and working in Garden Grove as well. So I'm hopeful to see that project, you know, move from the pilot phase to an actual, you know, bought-on show for that, for free-form. And I know that there's other opportunities for that to happen. I know we've had filming here. Christ Cathedral has had Star Trek film on their campus. There has been other movies that have utilized Garden Grove streets and stuff like that. So whatever we can do, I know that the California Film Commission does do, like, videos that they have on their website highlighting some of, you know, their unique architecture or scenery up and down California, so utilizing photos of areas in Garden Grove, or videos, or something catchy just to draw attention to what we have to offer, because I think we have an extremely diverse community, and all of our different areas have something to offer. So if we can highlight that on the website, create a page for it, and if we're partnering with hotels for discounted rates for film crews, that we also indicate all of that on there, as well as, you know, restaurants that are willing to cater at, you know, maybe a discounted rate as well for large orders, things like that is really what I'm looking for, so we can incentivize. Because I think the struggle is, when you have folks, that comes with a lot of crew, right? And even if it's a small amount, that's still, however many people that they need to pay and cover costs for, whether it's food and lodging, et cetera, but we want to make sure we highlight our city as a true gem that it is, and make sure we're incentivizing people to consider us. I know that, I think it was American Horror Story did some stuff in Orange, so we have other cities that are getting some filming attention, and that they're going out of their way to get permits from those cities and, you know, shut down areas and film there. So I want to make sure that Garden Grove's in the bag, in the mix of that bag. So that's it, thank you.
As an action item? Are we not supposed to take any action?
I think we have our direction.
That was kind of why I laughed and asked him, because it was on the agenda last time, and we voted for them to bring it back. So when I saw it here, I was like, uh, what's happening?
Item 8D.
Item 8D is discussion regarding SB 357, repeal of prohibition of loitering with the intent to commit prostitution, as requested by Councilmember Patrick Fettbue.
Okay, and this may also fall into that category. What I would like to discuss is, I mean, category of whether we need to take action tonight or not. What I really would like to have direction from the City Council is, as I learned out that, found out that the SB 357 that had been recently passed by the state legislative and signed to law by governor, it become really concerned to me because I remember when I moved here from another state, I see a lot of activity with prostitution along Harbor Boulevard, very, very bad. Our police department had done a really great job in, you know, clearing all of those things out, and also it positioned Garden Grove to become one of the major hub for hospitality industry. So for something like this to happen, that they allow people to, you know, loiterings and asking for prostitution services is really worried to me. I'm not saying that we go out and, you know, try to lobby the state to reverse that law, but I think it's important for us to try to assess it and understand the impact to our hotel tourism industry, and also to figure out what can we do, you know, to protect us and minimize this impact to our residents and our city. And that is the intent of this discussion. I think, I do not know how much effort to require staff, but I understand that for something that is a little bit of works, they do not need direction from City Council. But if they have to spend some time to analyze the issue and come up with things, they need direction from our council in order to look into it, and that's why I would like to bring up this discussion, at least to give them a direction, so that they can go study it and come back to us for a report, and then depend on what that is, we can take, you know, appropriate action. That's the intent.
Just a couple of comments. You know, and Garden Grove PD has done a top-notch job. I mean, 20 years ago, you drive down Beach Boulevard, Harbor Boulevard, and it was really conspicuous commercial activity going on up and down. You don't really see that much anymore. And a lot of that is due to the hard efforts of the Garden Grove PD, and a lot of that is through modern technology. A lot of this has gone underground into the computer, where they don't necessarily have to walk up and down the streets anymore. You go online and, you know, swipe left or right, or whatever their code is, and do it that way. So I don't know necessarily that it's going to contribute to the problem increasing again. Also, there's more than one way to deal with those type of issues. You know, you don't necessarily need to, and I don't know what they do, and I don't want to know because I don't want to ruin the way they do things, you know, the Garden Grove PD, but you target things for the commercial application, or the health application, or the, you know, there's other laws that you can enforce that are on the books that aren't necessarily just the prostitution law, but, you know, maybe they're operating without a business license, or, you know, whatever law that they might be trying to enforce. So I don't know necessarily that we need to spend a lot of staff time on a report and all that. I think, you know, if that need comes up, I'm sure the PD would come to us and say, "Hey, we need more tools," you know, should that happen. But I'm interested to hear what your guys' thoughts are.
Well, you might be right, Councilman Bragum. I'm not saying that we have to do this, but it really concerned me that there might be impact to it. Now, I'm not necessarily going to ask our PD to tell us what are they going to do, so that, you know, people know about the tool and the things that PD use and they try to circumvent it. So that's not the intent. My concern is, when this thing coming up, and I know that the law allows people to soliciting, you know, prostitution services, thus, I don't understand, I do not, I'm not an expert, but it concerned me that we need to look into it, to understand what the impacts are, right? Maybe there's no impact, but maybe there is. So I think we need to look into it. I do not want to waste a lot of resource into it, but I think we need to do something about it, and I think that's why I want an answer. And I would like to ask PD to look into it and at least briefing me if you are not, you are not interested, but I do not want to go out there and ask them to spend, you know, 30, 40 hours looking into this and just to report to me. So that's why I want the council to give the direction, whether I could ask PD to look into it and let me know what's going on. At least I could have a peace of mind, but for me, for me, you know, the law allows for solicitation of prostitution is really concerning me because maybe they go underground, they use technology, but maybe not, I don't know.
So when I saw it on the agenda, and we talked about it previously, I went and read the text of the California Senate Bill 357. This is a legislative bill that I've This is a legislative bill that I believe, you know, would be split on this council on whether they would, you know, be in favor of repealing it or not repealing it. I, you know, it's nothing within my purview at this point, so I don't want to, like George said, you know, I don't think we should spend a lot of time on it. It's going to go through Senate Bill 357, and then if it's repealed or not, we can discuss it because I think you would have a split decision here. I try to stay out of things that aren't in my purview, so I don't, I don't think it would be advantageous to spend a lot of time on it. I understand your concerns.
No, no. John, it's not, this, the repeal is not, is not us or the city repealing this law.
Right.
I'm not suggesting that the city repealing it. This law, this law is repealing right now, before SB 357, state law prohibit soliciting of prostitution services, state law prohibiting that. So SB 357 repeal that law, okay? And I'm not asking that we repeal that repeal. I'm suggesting, what I'm asking is, I would like PD and the city attorney to advise me what are the impact of this law and potentially what can be done? What can we do in our tools to, in order to minimize this new law?
Okay.
That's the intent. So I'm going to make sure that you understand my intent because it seems like you might misunderstood what I'm trying to accomplish.
I would just say that I, you know, I may not be in favor of repealing this, but I believe it's a common sense approach to, you know, law enforcement. The reason this is on there is for discrimination of people by people assuming that a person's doing a certain activity because of where they are or what it is. And I would just encourage everybody to go read the text. Read the text of the bill. Obviously, we want to give our police department every tool in the toolbox to get rid of the bad activity of bad players. But I just encourage everybody to go read the text for yourself and whether you're in favor of repealing this or not. To me, I'm always a common sense guy, and when, we already have laws on the books, like George said, that can help us curtail this illegal activity without incriminating someone by the way they look or by the way they're acting on a public property or private property. That's just by two cents. I just wanted to give you some discussion, throw my opinion out.
I did not even suggesting that we want to repeal it. Did I make that clear? I just want to understand what the impact would that be.
Well, I'm just saying that we have no jurisdiction over repealing it or not, but I know each council member could write a letter to our state legislature whether they approve, you know, whether they support or don't.
Yes, but that's, it's not the point of this discussion here. The point of this is not to repeal it, right?
No, I know, I know that.
The point of these discussions is to understand, to trying to understand what the impact might be. Not to repeal it or not repealing it.
Okay. So I just throwing my two cents out there because I wanted to give some discussion on the item, so that's all I wanted to say.
And within that context, I don't understand, or I don't really think this necessarily needs to be an action item. I think it's within our purview as council members that anytime there's a law or proposal or whatever.
That's correct. That's why I said this might be similar to NC.
Any legislative action, yeah.
Yeah.
By all means, ask staff to understand it, give me materials or something, better understand it. I don't think we need to appropriate staff time through an action at a council meeting necessarily to do that, but.
So can we, so basically, so I could go ask staff to spend some time to look into it and report to me what they think it is, the impact might be? Is that what it is? So I don't need the council approval for that?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, Councilman Bowie, just like council members have a lot of different things you're interested in, we talked to you about a lot of different things individually, so I think I understand where Councilman Bowie's coming from. This is a pretty new state, this is a pretty new piece of legislation. What I'd suggest, you know, let's let the police department analyze where it's going for a little bit of time, and then I'll get with you directly, Councilman, and maybe you and I can have a conversation with the police chief and just kind of talk a little bit, make sure we understand it, and then go from there.
Sure. That'll be good.
Okay. All right. With that, that's all of the matters that were listed, so I'll go around the horn. Councilman Bredigam, anything to report for the good of yours?
Just, you know, some issues, and I even hate to bring it up, but maybe we can get a little community support, you know, peer pressure, so to speak. Our Concerts in the Park, awesome event. You know, the Community Foundation goes through a lot of work. We voted on a fundraiser to help support those tonight. But recently, there's been a lot of actions that could cause us to lose our communities in our concerts in the park by just a few people. But, you know, a few bad apples, they can ruin your insurance, you know? And just happened to have one of the insurance folks out there at one of the concerts of the park, and they're seeing folks walking around with open alcoholic beverages. I'm not talking about red cups. I'm talking about just cans of beer or bottles of whiskey walking around like that. You know, you can't do that, obviously, obviously. And you jeopardize the insurance, and without the insurance, we can't put on the concerts. So, you know, I'm hoping the community will apply a little peer pressure to folks to, you know, please don't ruin our concerts in the park. The golf carts, wonderful tradition, that's wonderful. But, you know, you can't run through the cone patterns. And we had city employees who were cussed out because golf carts want to jump up onto the park and cut through and run people over, and they're telling them you can't come past here. You know, just go by the rules of the road, just like you're a motor vehicle. You know, respect each other, respect everyone, and drive with due regard to public safety. And that includes our city employees who are out there trying to put things away and, you know, that kind of stuff. So, you know, I urge our community to come together. When you see stuff like that, don't rely on, you know, for the police to cut, put the pressure on them, tell them, hey, put that away, that's not allowed. We don't want to ruin this for our whole city because of a couple of bad apples. So please, and that's all.
Or red cups.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you. Just, I wanted to extend my consolences to the Tindall family and thank George for all he did for the years of service, especially the culture that was described that he kind of instituted, which is alive today, like the mayor said. It's really a blessing to be a council member, to be city executive administration, or even just working for staff. There is a culture here that continues to be that way, and it's because of what he started. And the reason I believe that he had that culture is because I see that in the community that I've been a part of for 57 years. They brought that community we have with faith groups, Chamber of Commerce, just regular folks out there. Those types of people get elected to city council, and they kind of emanate that same thing, and I think that's where it came from. So I really appreciate that because I've sit on this side of the dais, and I appreciate that for not only us, but for you guys that work for the city day in and day out, the 600 or 700 people that we have out there doing the hard work every day. And it also, you know, it breeds a culture of, here in Garden Grove, like we had a full room tonight, I can't comment on labor negotiations because we're in negotiations, but I can say that that same culture that George brought and that the community has brought to Garden Grove is alive, and we treat everyone with respect. We lift people up. We have very diverse folks on here that have different ideas, but we treat people with respect. We lift everyone up instead of tearing people down. Same goes within negotiating with whatever group it may be. We're going to treat them with respect, we're going to negotiate fairly, and we're going to get through the process. So I can appreciate everyone that came out and spoke tonight, and I really appreciate the Tindall family and what George did to install that, instill that culture here in Garden Grove. So, thank you. That's it.
Mayor Protem.
I just want to echo what John said. I think our staff did a wonderful job, keep everything together, right, helping us to do our part. But at the same time, I also want to highlight SRT team and the public work, especially on the area of reading and broadcast, right behind the 99 cent store, is a big improvement. The constituents around that neighborhood is very happy. And now when you drive by, it's actually, it's very open, very clean, and very, I feel very safe. Because I actually drove on that stretch, and there was one time I get jumped, you know, by this incident. So I'm very happy, very much appreciated, everything SRT team did and the public work as well. Thank you.
Kim. A couple of things, but I'll keep them short and fast. One, I'd like to, again, make a formal complaint about Caltrans and the freeway exits and entrances. I know that it can be difficult to work with them, so if I need to send a letter or if we need to ask my colleagues to join in a letter, I would really appreciate taking some time to address this issue. These areas are getting really, you know, becoming a health hazard, to be quite honest. There's clothes, there's, people are using the bushes for restrooms, people are taking showers in there, they have a lot of leftover things that they leave there. They're having their carts along the area and then just dumping things out. There's an encampment that's brewing of the 22 westbound entrance just past Harbor and Trask. They are utilizing the large campaign signs that were on that wall as shelter, but I am being told that it is a sliver of that area that is not Garden Grove, that is Caltrans. So this has just become unacceptable, and the people that are living up against these walls and in between these slivers are having to deal with some unsafe and, you know, scary situations. So we really need to get a handle on that. And if Caltrans doesn't want to clean it up, then they should fence up the area and monitor it to ensure that people aren't in there. This includes the large patches of grass that are in between the freeway and the exits and entrances. Secondly, a huge shout-out to the Garden Grove Police Association. They donated backpacks to Buena Clinton area neighborhood to Thomas House Shelter, and I was able to go there with Councilmember Nguyen this past weekend, and there was a lot of happy kids that got some backpacks and school materials, so that was really nice to see. And I don't know the rules or how this will work because it's labor negotiations, and Councilman O'Neill has stated that he can't speak at length about it, but if there's an opportunity for us to send a letter to the other members, just not including any specific details, but just saying, we hope that you come to the table ready to work, and somehow word it in a way that isn't overpassing or overstepping, I would gladly sign on to that, Councilmember O'Neill, if you want to do that, so you're not by yourself. I know that may not be like the most ideal thing to, you know, by yourself contact everybody, so if you need help or a letter, happy to sign on that with you and help however I can. And happy belated birthday to Councilmember Tu Han Nguyen, or Mayor Protem.
Yes, well, I just would like to have shout-out to our city manager Scott Stiles and Afara, our deputy chief, for tremendous effort to round out on illegal activity by a group of car racers and, you know, wheel spinning event on Brookhost and Westminster these past few days. I got a lot of complaint about this type of activity at various places in our city. It seemed like they randomly going from one big shopping plaza to the next. And I have encouraged residents to complain and call 911 immediately if they saw that those activity, and we have alert our police department to keep an eye on for those activity. And a few days ago, they sighted quite a number of people, towed away about, you know, a dozen cars and a lot of citations. This had become a very chronic problem for our, for a lot of our business. There's one complaint to me about a couple of weeks ago on Brookhost near Catila shopping area. And so luckily, this time we was alerted by the resident, and our PD have done a tremendous job to, you know, catch them in the act. And I think we need to continue to monitor this kind of activity. It will not go away that easy. So a big shout-out to our police department. Also, I would like to thank community service John Monjantes and his staff for tremendous job at the new, brand-new, very modern look gazebo. I was at the ribbon cutting with Mayor Jones and a few city council, and I looked at that and I said, wow! Because I use that gazebo area for picnic a lot, and the new design is really very, very interesting. They put all of the picnic table in the area, you know, outside, close to the outside of the gazebo, leaving the inside for, you know, more activities like exercises and other type of events. I think that's wonderful, and I shared ride with our city manager back to the council meetings, and he drive me around and showed me many other mini gazebo, so many of them, three or four at least, I think. And I think that is wonderful because I use that park a lot, and I was surprised to see so many because I haven't been back there for about a couple of months, and it's a tremendous accomplishment. So thank you, everyone.
Great. Stephanie Kay, I forgot about you. You still out there? Anything to add?
That's all right. Hi, everybody. I'm going to go ahead and get back to my vacation, but as always, it's an honor to be a part of the council meeting, even if from afar. So have a good night and see you all soon.
Thank you.
Good night, Steph.
General counsel, anything, any close session or anything to report?
We have no close session and no anything else to report. Thank you.
Thank you. City manager Scott Stiles.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just two quick things. One is appreciate, I also want to compliment our police department. They're actually participating in a citywide, countywide task force on illegal street takeovers and the like, and so we've had a couple of these situations. They've used some really effective strategies, as Councilman Bowie has indicated, to make a number of arrests, a number of citations, confiscate a number of vehicles. So, you know, we want to send the message that that's not acceptable, and our police are doing a great job. The final thing I wanted to just say is to thank the council members for their recognition of Mr. Tindall this evening, city manager, fraternity sorority is a small one, and, you know, I appreciate your recognition of his profession, all the good work that he brought to the community. Just listening to some of the history, some of his accomplishments that he helped bring to us were really, really tremendous. I just had the pleasure of meeting him once, very early, when I got here, about seven years ago, and we had a nice conversation about stuff that he had done, and since his passing, I had a number of city employees come up to me and just spontaneously wanted to tell me good stories about things that he had done and projects he had worked on. So I know he just had a big impact on this community, and so wanted to thank you for your recognition of him. That's all I had. Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Scott. All right. And with that, we will stand adjourned until Tuesday, August 23rd. Thank you very much. Enjoy the rest of your evening.